Good evening. I'd like to call the regular meeting of September 20, 2022, Mentor City Council order. Invocation will be given by Councilman Blake.
Heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day. Help us to use good judgment for the business at hand and guide us in wisdom with a continuing sense of truth and fairness for the community we represent.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Here.
Mr. Donovan?
Here.
Mrs. Dowling?
Here.
Mr. Freeman?
Here.
Mr. Kirchner?
Here.
Mr. Krieger?
Here.
Mr. Marn?
Here. Approval of minutes. Council, you're in receipt of the September 6, 2022, regular meeting minutes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Public hearings, we have none. Tabled legislation, we have none. New legislation. Ordinance number 22-0-075.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Cleveland Freightliner, Freightliner, Inc. for the purchase of two Western Star 47X cabs and chassis under the State of Ohio Department of Transportation Cooperative Purchasing Program and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert sitting in for Mr. Flippeak. Welcome.
Thank you very much. As part of an ongoing fleet management and replacement program, the Department of Public Works recommends purchasing two Western Star 47X dump truck cabin chassis using the ODOT purchasing program. This type of single axle dump truck is the mainstay of our snow plowing and maintenance activity. The price under the state program is $130,872 each for a total of $261,744. The vehicle will be purchased from Valley Freightliner, Inc., located in Parma. Thank you.
Council, any comments?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-0-076 is passed. Ordinance number 22-0-077.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Chai Corporation for the Palo Alto Firewall Network Appliances Support, Maintenance Services, and Licensing and Declaring an Emergency.
Mr. Schweickert? Thank you. I'll ask Mr. Seahan to speak to the details of this proposed ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert, Mr. President, and members of the council. One OT's essential goal is to protect our business from hackers' attacks and other internet threats. A firewall is a network security device that acts as the first line of defense, that monitors incoming and outgoing traffic, and decides whether to allow or block specific traffic based on a defined set of security rules. Palo Alto is recognized as one of the leading vendors in the cybersecurity field. We've been utilizing Palo Alto for three years, and it works very well. I recommend renewing our support for another three-year term to prevent exposure to cyber attacks. I am here to answer any questions you may have. I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Ali. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-0-077 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-078.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Classic Ford for the purchase of five 2023 or current model Ford utility police interceptors and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert?
Light of ongoing manufacturing delays and supply chain problems, we're having to be a little bit more flexible in how we approach some of our purchases. And I'll ask Chief Gunge to speak to this police guard purchase at this time.
Yes, thank you. Members of council, this past February, the city ordered five marked police vehicles and two administrative vehicles. To date, we've received only one administrative vehicle. We're still on hold for the others. We've seen, as the rest of the country, unique circumstances regarding availability of new vehicles. Additionally, new vehicles are costing significantly more than similar vehicles purchased in the recent past. State procurement process for vehicles have all been eliminated due to the lack of vehicles available for purchase. There's no current state contract pricing for police vehicles. It may not be in the next few years while this situation continues to be unstable. Because of this situation, council approved additional funding for purchasing five additional vehicles in 2022 for our 2023 stock of police cruisers. Recently, a short window opened by Ford to place police vehicle orders. Due to difficulty in obtaining the vehicles at the time and the time sense of nature of this purchase, we reserved an order of five vehicles. We were able to obtain two quotes for the vehicles. Classic Ford provided the lowest quote at $49,990 per vehicle for a total of $249,950. The cost for outfitting these vehicles will be included in our 2023 police capital budget. I recommend approval for this legislation.
Thank you, Chief. Council?
Mr. President.
Mr. Marn?
Question for the chief, Mr. Schweickert. So, we're having problems with Ford being able to have the necessary parts to build the cars. What about the police apparatus that goes along with the cars in terms of computers, things of that nature? Do we anticipate a hold with that, too? Or is that in...
You know, I think everything is fluctuating. Sometimes we can get it, sometimes we can't. I don't know that we've had a problem with any type of our upbuild for the cars. A lot of the material that we use, we repurpose from the previous vehicles, so that helps out an awful lot, saving costs. But as soon as we know that what we're going to get, we can go ahead and order any of the parts. And again, if we're going to order these vehicles now, we don't know when in 2023 they're going to arrive. Look, we're at eight months right now for the vehicles we ordered in February. We may look at towards June-ish to get these vehicles, so we have time to get any of the additional equipment.
I guess what I'm leading up to, council, we have budgeting coming up here in the next few weeks. I mean, maybe we should even order more. You know what I mean?
More vehicles right now?
I mean, we got budgeting coming up, so we could do it earlier.
Right, I understand.
We passed that budget, you know, passed our 2023 budget. It's one of the first things that we do instead of waiting until February, maybe even January at the end of the year, depending on, you know, the situation.
Well, right now, you're not able to order vehicles. We had that short window that was open, and we jumped on it, and we did reserve an order. So, I don't know if, when that window's going to open up again. But when that does open up again, we will be ready to go ahead and order more.
Ford was just in the news today about their supply chain problems, so, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Marn. Council, anything else?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-0-078 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-079.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Stryker Corporation for the purchase of two LifePak 15 version 4 monitor slash defibrillators with service maintenance and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert? Chief Searls, could you address this, please?
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. Mr. President, members of council, this request is for the purchase of two of our LifePaks. They're cardiac monitors that are a unique piece of equipment. Our cardiac monitors are probably our most expensive but most vital piece of equipment used by our paramedics. They're used on a daily basis in every advanced life support call. And you may recall, last year, you approved the purchase of six. This request is for two new monitors. They're state-of-the-art monitors. And Stryker is the sole source vendor for these monitors. This is a specialized piece of medical equipment. It has to be serviced. They won't service anybody else's equipment, and it's just a vital piece of equipment. So, we're asking for the purchase of two this year to completely outfit our fleet with LifePak 15s that'll cost not to exceed $58,341. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Move to approve. Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. President, real quick.
Go ahead.
You know, we're looking at this more and more in terms of outsourcing. You know, with our budgeting coming up, is, do we, have we talked about it, administration, as a plan where we're going to be outsourcing more in different departments, and we see a progression moving towards that way? So, I guess, how do we plan for that, how we budget for that, moving ahead? You see what I mean?
Ah-huh.
And, you know, because lifeguards is one thing. You know, that seasonal help. You know, people cut the grass, seasonal help, things of that nature in the summer. But when you get to the nuts and bolts of our organization, in our engineering department, our finance department, our parks department, you know, it's definitely a problem that everyone's facing, and we're facing it, too. So, whether we have to look at pay structure, or we have to look at if we're going to further outsource different positions or different departments, you know, it's something we've got to talk about during budgeting. Anyway, I just thought about it.
Thank you, Mr. Marn. Do you have a second?
Yes.
Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. That was approved, right?
Yeah, we're good.
Ordinance number 22-0-080 is approved. Ordinance number 22-0-081.
An ordinance authorizing the city manager to enter into a contract with Irrigation Consulting, Inc. for irrigation system design and consulting services at Blackbrook Golf Course and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert? I'll ask Mr. Kaminski to adjust this proposed upgrade at Blackbrook Golf Course.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert, members of council. The Parks and Recreation Department is requesting approval for professional service agreement with Irrigation Consulting, Inc. for the irrigation design and consulting services of Blackbrook Golf Course. We had two RFPs turned in on September 2. The scope of work would include, but not limited to, create detailed plan specifications, project documents for a new irrigation system, the creation of specification design for a new pumps station and building, and most importantly, evaluate the current water capacity of the golf course that we have right now. Based upon a review of the agreement, of the document with the Blackbrook personnel and the Parks and Recreation Department, all the criteria was met. They have experience and have met all the deliverables. It is therefore recommended that a contract be awarded to Irrigation Consulting, Inc. for the design and bid documents for a total of $53,540.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminski. I guess your comment on our water capacity, are you talking about if our lakes have enough water to pull from the rainwater, or are we going to have to get a meter and meter it? Is that what you're basically thinking?
Combination of both. This year, for example, during the drought, we actually had to turn on the city water and fill the ponds.
And meter it, yeah, okay.
That was correct.
All right, thank you. Council?
Yep. Mr. President, one question. On the certificate of insurance for the company, can we have added, they have us down as an additional insured. I'd like to see that they name us as an additional named insured with a waiver of subrogation and that it's primary and non-contributory?
Want to say anything on that yet?
Well, do you want explanation for that?
Mr. Ziemler, let's have a conversation.
I'm going to let you handle those parts of the contract from now on.
When I say the waiver of subrogation, when we're, first of all, we are named as an additional named insured, it gives you the same policy rights as the named insured itself. Waiver of subrogation, what we're saying is if there's a claim, their insurance company has to handle it, and they cannot go back against our insurance to collect any money, whether partial or not. Being primary makes them the primary insured, and non-contributory means not only you can't subrogate against us, but we're not going to contribute any money either. Your insurance company is responsible for handling whatever the claim is.
That's why you've been doing insurance for 60 years, right?
Not that long.
I didn't mean that. Not personally. Council?
I'll move to suspend with the additional verbiage.
I'll second. Julie, please call the roll.
Am I amending the legislation?
Oh, yeah.
No, we're not.
We're not amending it, no.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Resolution number 22-RR-113 is adopted. Ordinance number 22-0-082.
An ordinance levying special assessments for acquiring, constructing, installing, equipping, improving, maintaining, and repairing improvements necessary for making improvements to abate erosion along properties within the city, including within the Lake County Community Shoreline Special Improvement District, together with all necessary appropriations thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert, you want to go again?
This is just the companion piece to the previous resolution. Thank you. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes.
Move to approve.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Resolution number 22-RR-113 is adopted. Ordinance number 22-0-082.
An ordinance levying special assessments for acquiring, constructing, installing, equipping, improving, maintaining, and repairing improvements necessary for making improvements to abate erosion along properties within the city, included within the Lake County Community Shoreline Special Improvement District, together with all necessary approaches thereto and declaring an emergency.
Mr. Schweickert, you want to go again?
This is just the companion piece to the previous resolution. Thank you. Council?
Move to suspend.
Second. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Marn?
Yes. Ordinance number 22-0-082 is approved. We are on a, ordinance over, a second reading of ordinance over 22-0-072.
An ordinance amending the codified ordinances of the city of Menor 2006 as amended, section 919.03, to require the issuance of permits for the removal of street tree species defined pursuant to law as undesirable.
Council, any comments?
Mr. President, based on, I know that we have a number of persons before council. I don't know if we'd like to hear their input before. I certainly have some ideas. I think the law director may as well to at least address some of the concerns about the current ordinance, but I would suggest letting the various interested parties speak, and then speak, and then we can decide where we're going to go.
That's your choice, that's fine. Let's call the people up. Uh, number one, we have, uh, Rod Schroeder. Please come up and give, uh, the clerk your, uh, name and address, please. You have four minutes, Rod, and
Okay.
And everybody else, let's, let's not repeat, or clap, or boo, or anything. Let's, we're all in, we're all going to try to work this out together. I appreciate it. Thanks, Rod.
Okay, thank you. My name is Rod Schroeder. I live in Noel Creek. I am currently the Chair of the Mentor Tree Commission. I'm up here not to argue about whether we should cut down sweet gum trees, whether we should cut down live trees. I don't agree with it. I saw, early in my career, I worked for a large paper company in southern Ohio as a contract forester. Many of my job duties were timber appraisal, timber management, erosion control, reclamation, future harvesting plans, and planting plans. Today, I work in the urban forest, and when I look back to the days of working in the forest, there's only one difference. You cut down a live tree in the forest, it's for profit. You cut down a live tree on a tree lawn, it's for loss. Monetary loss. Financial loss, aesthetics, property value, air quality, and city resources. Everybody should have a handout that I asked the contract arborist Ben Asper to generate. What they'd handout is, it's an estimate of a value for a tree. A sweet gum tree, the size of the trees on Palmerston. This information came from the ISA, International Society of Arboriculture. It's a world, world-recognized organization in street tree management. That's how the trees are valued. I don't know if anybody has any questions on it. Um, I know it's, it's a little toothy, a little in-depth, but, uh, every single tree out there, whether it's in the woods, or it's on the tree lawn, has value. So, when you guys, when counsel talks about coming up with legislation for either cutting down a live tree, whether it be on invasive, on the undesirable list, or on the not undesirable list, you have to ask yourself a few questions. Are you happy with cutting down a live tree that has value for the community? Is this only going to be for sweet gum trees? If not, is it only going to be for trees on the undesirable list, which greenlights a lot more residents to cut down live trees? Are we going to be opening Pandora's box with this? If we have a resident that gets a tree on their tree lawn they can't take care of anymore, are they going to come plead their case that we cut down, you know, a live tree we have a lot of money invested in just because they can't take care of it anymore? Who assumes the cost of the tree if allowed to cut the tree down? If a moving truck goes down the street and wipes out a tree, yeah, the insurance company will cover the cost of the tree, but there's still a cost and value of that tree, usually from, you know, city resources, and, you know, various other places. And when you do come up with an idea, I hope you compare Mentor with twenty-four thousand street trees to comparable northeast Ohio suburbs. I've worked in the urban forestry for twenty-three years. I've dealt with mayors, arborists, consulting arborists, city foresters, councilmen, and various degrees of city management. And I don't know any of them that would allow a resident to cut down a live tree. And I don't think Mentor should be the first ones to dip their toes in the water for this. So, as a seven-year member of the Tree Commission, and I've seen a thousand trees planted since I've been on the commission, and as a resident, we should really look at this hard before we make a decision. Thank you.
Thanks, Rod. Hey, Rod, can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Before you go away and just addition your four minutes, what we're talking about is American sweet gum tree. Is there other types of sweet gum trees other than the American?
We have been planting columnar sweet gum trees on short tree lawns that are fruitless.
But these ones that we're talking about now are the American sweet gum trees, which
Ones on Palmerston and Silvermount, yes.
These are indigenous to North America. They were here before the pilgrims got here.
Yeah.
So, I mean, right now, we're, we're dealing with adler trees and invasive, um, bugs that kill our trees, but I think, you know, just for the definition, I'd like to have this defined as the American sweet gum tree.
Yeah, liquid amber.
Right. I'm not for cutting down anything American. Thank you.
Mister
Thanks, Rod.
President.
You got a question for Rod?
In what you gave us, it says the species would receive a rating out of fifty out of a hundred. Where would we find the rating?
The rating would be, um, I could get you the information, is through the ISA. That's how they score and rate.
Okay.
Which is, um, you know, it's a worldwide rating schedule, or rating system.
I gotta say, got it. Okay, thank you. Sorry.
Okay.
Our next person up is Sharon DiAmico. Sharon, if you can. Try not to repeat, and you have four minutes, and please give the clerk your name and address. Thanks.
My name is Sharon DiAmico. It's six-six-five-one North Palmerston Drive. Here's an example of one of those gumballs. A little bigger than what you've seen before. I'll be speaking for a few, uh, property owners. With all due respect, I know we have discussed our development's big concern over the sidewalks, lifting and cracking, people falling and getting hurt, and the constant cleanup of sweet gumballs, which is especially difficult for our seniors. Injections for the sterilization was mentioned at the last meeting. We've done some research and called companies. We were told it would cost between three-hundred to eight-hundred dollars every year per tree, depending on the size. It was also advised to be done by an experienced tree arborist every spring. And this procedure is not a hundred percent foolproof. Who would pay for this? These injections do not address the problems of the roots lifting and cracking sidewalks. They will continue to grow. Right now, we have some very large roots growing halfway across some tree lawns, following the sidewalks. On a final note, a copy of the original blueprints was submitted to Mark Freeman to review with the council. When our development was being built, builder offered each resident the choice of one free tree and two for corner lots. A little bit of time went by, and the city came and dropped off all these sweet gum trees. We were told that the builder planted these trees, which was not true. Can you explain to us why the sweet gum trees were dropped off after the blueprints were approved on March fourth, nineteen eighty-five, which listed different tree species to be planted? Thank you for your consideration of our plea for the council to do the right thing and pass this ordinance for the safety of the homeowners and anyone coming into our neighborhood.
Thank you, Sharon.
You're welcome.
Greg McDonald? Greg, state your name and address with the clerk, please.
I'm Greg McDonald, living at six-six-two-one North Palmerston Drive. I have a couple of thoughts here I wrote down to share with, with the council. When I, I do agree that the sweet gum trees do look nice, especially in the fall, um, but North Palmerston is not a through street. It's a neighborhood development. It doesn't pass supermarkets, churches, schools. It's thousands and thousands of cars are not passing through my street to see the glorious sweet gum trees, but they do pose a hazard, and I don't think the ordinance here is addressing twenty-four thousand trees to be cut down. As a matter of fact, there are other communities in the country that have addressed this because they do recognize the hazard. Some of these are Springfield, Missouri, Scottsdale, Pennsylvania, and Longview, uh, Longview, Washington. All those city councils and cities have taken upon themselves to remove the sweet gum trees because they recognize the hazard, not nuisance, the hazard that the sweet gum tree poses. I myself have turned the ankles several times on my tree lawn, walking over them, and the excessive roots system that have buckled my sidewalk. The gumballs have gotten into my snow thrower. I'm required to keep the sidewalk and driveway clear for pedestrians. It gets in the augers, jams up, because it's under the ice and snow that you don't see. So, that causes another problem. They do look pretty, but this, because the tree is pretty, doesn't mean that it isn't hazardous to the homeowners. So, falling acorns, falling helicopter maple seed pods, or just the routine maintenance of leaves coming in the beginning of the winter are not the same as these hazardous ball, spiky balls that are pervasive throughout our neighborhood. So, I recommend that we consider the homeowner, the liability that the city may face, knowing that the hazard has been brought to their attention, and pass the ordinance. Thank you.
Greg, I have a question. Um, I understand that these balls come three times a year. They don't stop, they constantly come. I'm just wondering, I don't know. Is that true? They, they, they don't drop once, they drop year-round?
There's all year-round, it's on my lawn, on my tree lawn, into the streets.
Okay, I'm just trying to find out if it's a constant, constant dropping.
Yeah.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate it. That's all we have on that. For counsel, um, counsel, any more comments? Probably Mr. Freeman?
President?
Janet?
Um, perhaps Mr. Schweickert could do. On our sidewalk program, we assist in paying for segments that are damaged by tree lawn trees, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, but we only, does that only happen when we're in that part of the cycle for that specific neighborhood? So, it's not an ongoing thing? So, they would have to wait an entire cycle?
Mr. Swiger oversees that program. I'll just ask him to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, uh, the city takes responsibility to replace up to three sidewalk slabs per street tree within the tree lawn. Uh, and that, that only pertains to the sidewalk program, which has about fourteen different zones right now, so that, that would be a, a benefit that the persons, persons within that zone would, would.
But it could go a fourteen-year cycle, is what you're saying?
It could.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Freeman?
Mr. President, um, one of the things that I've considered is whether we would want to limit the number of permits. I think one of the concerns was is that this is going to be sort of a wholesale removal, which I don't think it's going to be, from what my understanding is. But if there are concerns that we're going to have, I think we have three hundred sweet gum, American sweet gum trees in the City of Mentor. If you did permits of fifteen a year or so, you certainly, that would take twenty years, assuming the residents want to, all the residents that have those trees want to have them removed. So, if, if some of the concern is that you're going to have this, you know, wholesale removal, which I don't think is going to be the case, you could certainly put limits. And, and as indicated, this doesn't apply just to the sweet gum tree, it does to all the others listed as undesirable. And so, which, I don't know how many of those may actually be in the tree lawn, but some of those that are listed are, you know, invasive species, are quite pretty themselves, are ornamental, um, but, uh, present, uh, risks, and have been identified by the city itself previously as being undesirable. Second, in response to the notion that there, these trees have inherent value, uh, I'll certainly understand that argument, just as numerous trees that are in developments that are going on now have inherent value. Trees are not the only consideration, um, in terms of policy. They are one of the things that we need to consider, uh, and it's, this is not a wholesale destruction, but we have healthy trees that are getting removed, uh, in developments all the time. And so, I, I think this is a limited exception. It only opens the door if we add additional trees to the list, and if we put a limit, um, on the number, even if for some reason some future council decides to add additional undesirable trees, um, it, all that does is reduce the chance of any given tree, uh, having a permit issued. So, I, I think there's a way for a compromise here. I, I find it interesting to just the complete disregard for what the residents are facing, the sort of, and I get it in terms of perspective of the importance of trees, but as if essentially they're overreacting to something that other municipalities have been indicating, and I've referred to, recognize as problematic. I, I referred in the last city council meeting in terms of Marietta, Ohio, which itself, I believe, had a required fee that had to be paid for, for trees were removed, um, which recognized that it was essentially a fee to reflect the value of the tree, the amount of time, um, uh, cost, to, as I understand it, to preserve these trees in, in the, um, right-of-way, but Marietta, um, actually removed the requirement of that fee as to the sweet gum tree. So, look, I understand that there's a difference of opinion, um, to a certain extent, but I think that this is a limited, this is not the end of the world. If you look at these neighborhoods, these people take care of their lawns, they have big, beautiful trees. You're going to have a semblance of a canopy to begin with, even if all the sweet gums get removed, and they're not going to be. And I think in order to address the concerns of sort of wholesale removal, I think we certainly could consider some type of number limitation in terms of the, per year, so that trees can be, um, planted, grow, and as I said, if you picked a number, for example, fifteen, you'd have, it would take twenty years to circle through the sweet gum tree. So, healthy trees come down in the city on a regular basis. It, it shouldn't be the, the, the normal, and, and the fact that if folks come and say other reasons why, well, we can consider those, but what we're considering today is a particular species that other municipalities have recognized as problematic. Some of the literature I've quoted have talked about it being problematic, and I don't think that, I think this is a very limited, narrow response to a tree that is problematic.
Mr. President? Thank you. Councilman Krieger?
To echo what, uh, Councilman Freeman has said, you know, it's already been mentioned, and I've seen the plan where these trees were not originally designed to be in that neighborhood to start with. I think the city bears some responsibility, along with its commissions, for allowing these trees to be planted, when everything we've seen says that these trees should never have been planted in that right-of-way to start with, or that tree lawn. That it's known to drop the fruit, and it's dirty, and so on and so forth. And we're not, you know, making, like Councilman Freeman said, across the board, you know, as far as all trees that drop, you know, acorns or whatever, we're going to a specific number. And I, you know, I, I just, I want to add the fact, too, to be honest with you, I have a little problem with overreach of government telling me what I can have in my front yard. I don't care for that, but, uh, that's my own personal opinion, but I wanted to add that.
Thank you. Mr. President? Just a question on, um, the legislation. Section D, um, do we have anywhere in the, the code or the ordinance on these where once a tree is taken down, the stumps are ground as well as part of that process? I know we did another, that other street we did last year, everything got ground down by the residents, and is that, is that included? I, I'm sorry, go ahead, Mr. Swiger. I was reading.
Mr. President, members of council, yes. Uh, current section D, which, if this council enacts, this ordinance would be relabeled E, uh, that's on page three of three. The director shall indicate that removal of a tree shall include the entire tree and tree stump, and may require replacement of the tree as a condition for approval. So, that, that always applies, so it has to get taken down to the stump. Now, specific to these undesirable tier trees, it, it's mandatory that it be replaced. There's no discretion in that regard. The, the homeowner would have to replace it.
So, the other part of the code would, would kick in, then, as far as the stumps are concerned in that?
Well, certainly, yeah. I, presumably, they would be replaced in the same, same location, but maybe not. I, if there's a more ideal location within the tree lawn, then, then, yeah, but it would have to be taken down to the stump, certainly.
I just want to say one thing. I, I think council's in a very peculiar, peculiar place. Eight or nine years ago, uh, when I got on council, uh, my neighbor Clem Nessnaddy invited me over, he was on the Tree Commission, and he said he wanted me to meet a, a fellow who was going to take his place, and that's Dick sitting over there. And, and Dick, I went over to Clem's house, and we sat down, and Dick, uh, asked me if he could come in front of council, and I went to council. They said, yeah, Dick could come in and give us a proposal, and Dick came in, and he gave us a beautiful proposal for the, uh, for, for, for the Tree Commission, and he, and he asked for money, and we gave it to him, and we were all for trees. This council voted to give the Tree Commission money to take care of the, to do what they have to do, you know, with zero funding at all, and this council is very tree-friendly. I say we're, we're tree lovers, not huggers, you know? We, we do like our trees, and like Mr. Krieger said, um, you know, when, when a development comes in, or Mr. Freeman said it, too, you know, a lot of trees go down in developments, we, there's nothing we can do about that. We're in a very peculiar, peculiar place because we like trees, we, we want to have more trees, uh, we don't like to cut down healthy trees. And I guess I'm going to get into this tree that we're talking about. This tree is total nuisance. It, it's, it's a disaster. We're in a very peculiar place because we don't want to cut down healthy, beautiful trees. And, um, these, these balls go into your grass. I, I had one in my yard, not in my tree lawn, I had one in my yard. And year after year, you pick the balls out, you pick these prickly balls out of the grass, your kids step, your kids can't play in the front yard. They're nasty, they're dirty, they, uh, they're, they get in your lawnmower, they, they keep coming, they keep coming. And it's, it's probably one of the most nuisance, nuisance trees I've ever run into, to be honest with you. It, it's, uh, you know, buckeyes are buckeyes. I, I cut grass in high school at Darfield Park, and there were buckeyes, there were acorns, there were, uh, but there weren't any of these trees there. And, and, uh, you could, you could cut your, take care of your yard with acorns, you could take care of your yard with leaves and buckeyes and other things, but these things, you, you have your whole family out there picking them out of the grass. And I'm not, I'm not here to want to cut down healthy trees. But these trees are nuisance. And one of my, one of my big concerns is, um, like Mr. Freeman said, you know, or, or Mr. Blake, too, you know, how do we, how do we let, let these, let you guys cut down your trees, and then, um, and then somebody else comes and they want to cut down their healthy trees? We're in a predicament, and, and we all want to work together, and we understand what you're going through. We're not ignoring these trees are absolutely ridiculous, and these balls they drop, they're, they're, they, your yard is not usable. You know, if you, if you've never had one, you don't, you don't understand, these are a disaster. They're in the roads, they're in the sewer, they're in the tree lawn, they're in your yard. You know, I would like to come to a compromise of trying to help everyone with their, with their problem of year-round maintenance on a tree. I don't think anybody here has year-round maintenance on a tree. We all do our leaves when they fall, but we don't do these prickly balls all year long, and having the kids out there and everybody else picking them up. So, my predicament is, you know, how do we help you? How do we not? I don't want to cut down healthy trees. This is, this is a different situation. That's the predicament I'm in. I, I think council might feel the same way, uh, that this is a, this is a predicament. I'm not sure where everybody, you know, was leaning on this, on this vote, or if we want to go to another reading or what, and, and figure this thing out, but, uh, these trees are very, they're, they're one of the biggest nuisance I've ever seen, and that's where I'm at. You know, and, and it's hard for us because we, like I said, we, we joined up with the Tree Commission to make us a, a Tree City America, and, and it's happening. We're, I don't know, Matt, how many trees did we plant this year?
It'll be, uh, it'll be over three hundred.
Yeah, over three hundred trees. I don't know what other, uh, you know, cities are doing that. We're very, very tree-friendly, it's one of the, one of our things, we really take pride in here, and we're not into cutting down healthy trees, but, you know, everybody's talking about, do these trees affect your life? Do they, are they affecting these people's lives? Yes. And, and like Mr. Freeman said, I'm going to agree with him. What's more important? The tree or the person's, the person's life? How their, you know, quality of life is at their house, that they put almost all their money into, and they're taking care of their yards? What's the quality of life with this tree? That's what I've been thinking about, and, and, and waking up at night, thinking about it, because I care, and, uh, it's, it's a situation we're in. We want to get to a compromise. We don't like cutting down healthy trees. We're, we're all stuck on where we're going to go with the vote, and, uh, that's, that's where I'm at right now, so. Mrs. Dowling?
Mark and I had a discussion earlier today, and we were talking about trying to come to some kind of a compromise, and we had talked about ten trees, fifteen trees, how to go about determining it. I brought it up at the last meeting, and I still have a concern, if we can get to that point, I still have a concern about what is going to be planted. I don't like the idea of a little chest-high sapling. I would like to see if, if we can get there, and I don't know how everyone else feels, but if we can get there, I would like to see somewhat of a substantial tree, at least, you know, something, um, like in front of shore where the school planted trees. They're a relatively good-sized tree, at least, like, I think they're probably about ten feet tall, around that, something like that. So, I would be more comfortable if we would, if we can get to that point, if we replace it with a substantial tree.
Thank you.
And I don't know, I don't know the cost, so I understand that we would have to look into it. I don't know if we have all the answers tonight, I don't know if everybody else is comfortable moving forward. I'm not sure I have all my answers, but.
Mr. Blake? Thank you, Mrs. Dowling.
Mr. President, I've, I've heard talk of a development plot from nineteen eighty-five.
Yeah.
Shows trees, tree placements, and tree types. I've not seen that. Is anybody in possession of that?
Wait, she's got one out in the audience here.
Have you shared that with anybody on council?
With Councilman Freeman.
Yeah, I, I had it, I haven't reviewed it.
I'd, I'd like to place this on second reading, um, to give an effort to review that.
Before we go, Mr. Blake, Mr. Marn wants to
No, I, I agree a hundred percent, because I was going to ask the same thing. Mr. Freeman, you brought up two ins, good, interesting points, uh, one with the number. Have you thought about how these, if we did decide on fifteen, how these fifteen would be chosen? Would it be like a little lottery? How would we, would it be based on the age of the tree? Have you given any more consideration?
Well, I mean, first come, first serve. I mean, so whoever, with giving a maximum, um, uh,
I don't know, something to think about before next meeting?
Yeah.
I mean, just so that we, you know, we have something.
Well, there's been, there's been two thoughts. One, some type of lottery, but of course, then you're going to have to have people submit within a certain time period, right?
Right.
Or you have, you know, those that are submitted, and then, um, giving the administration, you know, some leeway as to what constitutes, you know, when petitions are filed, so we don't get in a fight of, if somebody's number eleven or twelve, I should have been number nine or ten. So, there, there's various ways of, of doing that. We'd have to talk with the law director as to what's most feasible, because part of this is, you know, as you make it more complex, it's more of a burden on the administration to make sure that you're fairly. So, my thinking would be, um, when submitted, drafted in a way that, you know, that's, that ultimately will be determined by the administration as to what's first received, but, um, again, look, I, if, my goal is to get us to four votes, so that they can get some relief. I think there's somewhat limits as to what I'd be willing to do, um, but it doesn't I think there's somewhat limits as to what I'd be willing to do, but it doesn't make any difference if, you know, we don't have a majority. So if you want to have, and we can have discussions whether we need to have, I know we don't like doing this, but whether we want to have a brief work session, because one of the things is, is, you know, you've got to make sure that you're, if we're going to all talk amongst ourselves, that we've got to do it in a public forum. So if we want for the next council meeting, and people come up with their own ideas, but I'm certainly willing, I mean, if you get 10 or 15 per year, you're probably addressing pretty much what the folks on the streets are looking to do.
You've brought up the city of Marietta, you know, twice, the last meeting and this meeting. Is that something that you want to further look at before the next meeting?
Well, I mean, I can certainly reach out to them. What my point was, was that they, as other municipalities have been mentioned here, recognize that this tree is qualitatively different in terms of what Marietta's history and situation is with trees and what their residents are looking for. That I don't know. I think at the end of the day, we've got to craft something that, you know, that fits what we're trying, aiming to do. All I'm really trying to say there is that some municipalities have recognized the very things that have been argued tonight, except when it comes to the sweet gum tree, in terms of its negative, as they say, externalities. So, but I, if you all want to talk about limitations in terms of the number per year, making sure that it's, I think that's fine, because I think if you get to 10 or 15 a year, it's going to take care of the problem that the folks have that have a concentrated issue in terms of, you know, 80 sweet gum trees, you know, concentrated in one, one location. But it also gives, because I've had some people reach out to me that have just one, and they're not fans of it either. So, so I'm, I'm open to try to get to a place where they're basically told, you have to live with it, so.
I think we have more work to do. Mr. Krieger.
Yeah, I want to disagree with Councilman Freeman as far as, if we're going to list it as an undesirable tree, I don't want to hear about a lottery or, you know, so many per year. It's listed as undesirable, whoever wants to file their permit files the permit for taking the tree down. I don't think it's fair to do a lottery or anything. If you're going to list it as an undesirable, under our current code, and we can ask the law director, we don't do a lottery for any other tree that's listed as undesirable. This is no different from the invasive species that we're, we take care of in the marsh. I mean, it's in, you know, it's something in the marsh. I mean, we've got it coming up where they're going to be spraying the marsh again to get rid of the invasive, you know, flagmities, and I think there's another, another grass that's growing there that's invasive, but it's the same difference. I mean, we're getting, getting rid of it to make the marsh a better place, and I think that's all the residents over there are looking for, is to get rid of an undesirable tree to make it a better neighborhood. So that's my opinion.
I'm going to speak for myself. I think one of the big issues with that is, is getting the, getting to four votes is, you know, I think there's 300 of these trees in the city, and that's what I think a lot of council's concerned about. There's three, Janet, Mrs. Dowling, I'm sorry.
One of the discussions I've had is that if we are going to limit the number of permits, that, and, and again, like Mark said, the more complex we make it, the more difficult it makes on the administration. But the possibility of all those permits being issued on one street as opposed to limiting X amount of permits per street, so the devastation to the neighborhood, it doesn't look as obvious. I just think, I don't think 300 people would come and want to take their sweet gum trees down. I don't, I personally don't believe that that would happen, but I prefer some kind, I personally prefer some kind of compromise on it.
Mr. President?
To try to get to a resolution.
In answer to that, and especially in my ward, is a good example of a development called Pine Gate. It had all ash trees in it, and of course, ash borer came along, so now you're talking about 175 homes, basically, and they're having at the same time almost to get rid of all the trees on the tree lawn. So I don't consider that a problem. If the development over on North Palmerston or wherever in the city wants those trees, wants they're deemed undesirable to be taken down, I don't see that as a problem. It wasn't a problem with Pine Gate for 175 locations, you know? And we had no requirement for Pine Gate when the ash trees were taken down, that they actually had to replant. Not at all. Didn't take out the stumps or anything. It was basically, actually, myself and a couple of the Tree Commission people actually walked the neighborhood to try and get people to put trees back on their tree lawn, and a number of them accepted, a number did not. But, I mean, that's the same, I would say, for any neighborhood. Pine Gate's not, you know, exclusive to any neighborhood, but I think that's the way that was handled. It worked well. The trees, trees have been planted over there, and they are growing, so.
Thank you, Mr. Krieger. I think we have a motion for a, go to third reading?
A second.
Second. This was going to go to third reading.
Do we need to call the roll? Julie, call the roll, please.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
Third readings, we have none, but we will next meeting. Manager's report, Mr. Schweickert.
I'm going to ask Mr. Schweickert to speak to a open-cut request.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. Pursuant to Menor Code ordinances, JLF Homes LLC is requesting permission to open-cut the pavement at one location on Lake Shore Boulevard for a new house at 7108 Lake Shore Boulevard. Request is for a new six-inch sanitary lateral connection to the existing sanitary main on Lake Shore Boulevard in the bike lane. Section of Lake Shore Boulevard is asphalt pavement with the most recent ODA PCR of 66. Proposed four-foot by six-foot open-cut is being requested to connect a new six-inch sanitary lateral to the existing sanitary main. Work cannot be completed without open-cutting the pavement because the existing main is located under the asphalt pavement in the eastbound lane. Traffic will be maintained per the Ohio Manual of Uniform Traffic Control Devices, and this request is recommended for approval.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
One good question. Is, are we going to get the repairs done expeditiously to the bike lane?
That will be our, our goal.
Because you know I, I will be on you.
Yes, you will.
Move to approve. Julie, please call the roll.
Mr. Blake?
Yes.
Mr. Donovan?
Yes.
Mrs. Dowling?
Yes.
Mr. Freeman?
Yes.
Mr. Kirchner?
Yes.
Mr. Krieger?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Mr. Schweickert, anything else?
Yes. Lake County Solid Waste District will hold a household hazardous waste collection this Saturday, September 24th, from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the Lake County Fairgrounds. A full list of acceptable materials can be found on their website. The Milling and Market Street began on Thursday, September 15th. This work will involve both concrete base repairs and an asphalt overlay. Traffic during construction will be limited to one-way eastbound traffic, with westbound traffic being detoured via Munson, Tyler, and Center Street. Work is scheduled through mid-November. City of Menor's bird banning operation is open to the public on Fridays in September from 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Menor Lagoon's Nature Preserve and Marina. The Last Menor Farmers Market is this Friday, September 23rd, from 2:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. at Garfield Park. We also have five new businesses, Lake Laser Engraving Lot at 4689 Corduroy Road, Endless Designs Boutique at 6072 Pine Cone Drive, Black Line Car Care at 7591 Tyler, Mood Tobacco and Vape at 9570 Diamond Center, and Letty Grace Beauty at 8806 A Menor Avenue. We wish them all the success in the world, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Schweickert. We're going to have to tell Mr. Philippiak, you know, you're doing a little better job than him, maybe. We're going to break his heart a little bit. Clerk's correspondence. Who is he? I don't remember.
Where'd he go?
Oh, my gosh, you guys. Council's in receipt of a liquor permit transfer of stock membership at Junction 615 Inc., DBA Petticoat Junction at 7376 Tyler Boulevard. Council's also in receipt of Menor Municipal Court August 2022 month-end report.
Thank you. Commission and committee reports. You are in receipt of the Board of Building and Zoning Appeals, August 9th, 2022, and Municipal Planning Commission, August 18th, 2022. Old business, we have none. New business, we have none. Persons before council, we have Philip Grano. Philip, there's Philip. Philip, there you are. Philip, please give your name and address for the clerk.
My name is Philip Grano. I live at 9155 Idlewood Drive. I'd like to thank all of you for giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you tonight. I live in the Idlewood Drive, on Idlewood Drive. There are a number of people that are here who live there. We all live in a very nice development. We have great homes, very well-kept. We have lawns that are very well-kept, and landscaping that's very well-kept. The city also owns a piece of property on Idlewood. And if you look at the picture there, that is the city property that's there, and it looks pretty nice, okay? Unless you start walking on the sidewalk. Walk on the sidewalk, this is what you see. Not a lot of grass, a lot of weeds. Now, you may look back at the last picture and say, okay, wait, but there was a lot of greenery there. This, what are you talking about? Well, greenery that's there is this. It's weeds. 90% of that yard is weeds, very little grass. And here we are in a neighborhood that everybody takes care of their property. Everybody has green grass. If you look at this picture here, that's a typical, that's a typical yard in Idlewood. What I'm asking the city is to do one of two things. Number one, what I want you to do is really take care of the property. Get, get, get the lawn to look like the rest of the neighborhood does, not a bunch of weeds. It's miserable-looking. And number two, if you can't do that, if you don't want to maintain that, then get rid of the property. That's what I'm here to ask, you know, to talk to you about today. I would like, and as would the people that are here, would like to ask you to please take care of your neighborhood, of your property. We take care of ours. We take care of our grass. We take care of our yard. The city's not doing that. But that's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. President?
Mr. Blake?
If I could, Mr. Grano, you and I have talked about this. This is actually a deadhead.
Sorry?
I don't know if people know what that is, but a deadhead is, is where a road should have gone, and it ended up not there for some reason or another. I don't think anybody in this chamber can remember why that road connector, which I guess is Carmen, did not make the connection to Idlewood. And so you've got these, these two long roads, one of them is Terrace, and the next one is Idlewood, and so you've got this deadhead there. And every time I drive by, I think to myself, you know what? That's where a connector should go, because it's right in the middle of those two roads. And I think what I'd like to look at, and you and I have talked about this before, is putting that road in there, because it would be a connector, and we're all about connectivity. And you've got the, the two roads, the fire department could use it for a turnaround of trucks. And I, like I said, I don't know why it didn't make the connection.
Councilman, what I can say to you from what I've learned in the past is, the reason that was not put in is that former fire chiefs thought there was no reason to do it, so why spend the money? The initial purpose of that, before the neighborhood was fully developed, was that for fire and emergencies. And then they later decided that, why spend a million dollars, or whatever, you know, it would cost probably over a million dollars to put that in, when it's not necessary? And I would think what you would find out, if you took a vote of that whole neighborhood, 99% of the people would tell you, no, they don't want that.
Why, and I know that you can't speak for them, but why?
Because what you'll find is more cutting through. The cars cutting through, and people don't like that. And if you think I'm wrong, ask some of the people that are there, that are here.
But I can understand that, but who would cut through? I mean, you would, you'd have cars that would be going down Terrace and maybe coming down, I mean, they wouldn't be coming from outside.
Well, I'll come back and say, what's the purpose of putting one in there? There's no need to put one there. No one has ever said, gee, we really need this. There's no purpose to put it there. And why would this spend money?
I'm thinking about connectivity.
And by the way, there are two trees there, so you'd have to talk to our gentleman who is the tree person here, because you guys are so dead against cutting down trees, and there actually are probably five or six trees there, so you would have to do that. And no one in 60 years, councilman, it's been there for 60 years.
I know.
No one's ever talked about putting that in.
Philip, your time's up. Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Well, I, I think what I'd like to do is take a look at that idea. I mean, maybe, Dave, you know, can there be a traffic study of some sort that, I don't know? And I, I guess I would love to hear from the neighbors. Blake@cityofmenor.com, you know, shoot me an email.
I'd be more than happy to have, I will tell you that 99% of the people won't want one. We've talked about it.
But if they email me, I'd like them to give me a reason, because I, I see two roads that people can walk down these sidewalks, which is nice, but I see two roads, and there is no interconnectivity there.
Why do we need interconnectivity?
Why do you need connectivity?
Why do you need it?
I, I think that if you turn down the wrong road, and you find that you're not on the right road...
Councilman, why do you need it? People, in 60 years, we haven't had it. 60 years.
It's just a suggestion.
Well, and I'm suggesting that, and what I'm asking the city to do is, please take care of the property that's there now.
Thank you, Philip. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We have no more people before council? Oh, yes, we do, we have Ron Wassum. Ron, please come up.
Move to, oh.
Second.
Please give your name and address for the clerk.
I promise I won't cluck.
And don't give us your birthday or anything.
Oh.
Poor guy. Poor guy. Ron Wassum, president of Menor Fire Museum and Menor Safety Village. Here tonight to update you, since you turned the barn over to us earlier this year, we've been moving forward with cleaning and doing other maintenance items. We've hired an architect now who is in the process of designing the handicap restrooms and kitchenette, which will go into the area where the car wash used to be at one time that the city used. So we're not just sitting back, we are doing everything that we can to live up to our commitment that we made with you when you did turn that building over to us. On that track, some exciting news. Beginning the week of October 3rd, we will have onsite training once again for the third graders with menor schools, parochial schools, homeschooling. Things have been moving along. Chief Searle's appointed Roland Patchiner, education specialist. He's been dealing with the schools, and we are finally, after COVID interference and everything else, moving forward with having the kids back on premises for that training. So those are the things that I've wanted to bring to you tonight. If any of you want a copy of the plan that is up there right now, I have copies here that I'll leave. Any questions?
Any questions, council? Mrs. Dowling?
We talked about the little vehicles. Do we have those?
We don't have those. Right now, we're trying to go one step at a time. The biggest step being the dollar commitment to upgrading the building, putting the restrooms in and so forth. We've had some people who have contributed. One of the people who has been tremendous for us over the years, Roger Sustar, owner of Freedon, has been a, just a wonderful supporter for us, for the museum, and for Safety Village in moving forward. So it's, we're excited, and we're, we're happy that this is finally coming to fruition. Our plan is to get this construction done over the winter, once city approves the plans that are finalized, and continue to open up. I mean, we have a lot of different ideas that we're floating around, like the, the big garage doors that are in the front. You know, we've talked about doing something like a program each year, kids that come through, they'll give us, send drawings and pictures that they make, thanking us for the time, their impression of Safety Village. And one of our thoughts was, well, what if each year we had a contest where the kids come up with ideas for safety paintings on a garage door this year, the following year, and so on? All four doors would be done each year, and of course, we would have to come to the city for approval on that, because we don't want to interfere with any sign ordinances that might prevail over that. We hope they wouldn't, but those are ideas we're bouncing around. What else can we do? What can we do to make it more personalized for the kids that come through the programs?
Ron, thank you so much for your work, Ron. We really appreciate it.
In closing, I would just like to, on a personal note, thank council for recommending me earlier this year for Lake County Development Authority. Nine months into it, it's, it's fun, it's exciting. The project's not only just ongoing, but looking forward at new projects, and from my standpoint, certainly watching out for my city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Appreciate it. Council, move to adjourn.
Second.
Readings?